Okay. Mayor Markley is unable to join us this afternoon, so I'm going to be leading the meeting for just a little bit, and I'm going to pass it on to Councilmember Rodenberg. So we're talking today, and if something happens to him, he will, he will tag someone else. So I'm Robin Denson, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Gig Harbor City Study Session of Thursday, October 27th. And we will start with a roll call. And Josh Stecker, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure, Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lichens.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Storset has not joined us yet. And Councilmember Wook.
Here.
And Mayor Markley is excused this afternoon.
And Josh, I just want to note that Mayor Markley did inform me that the Councilmember Storset has notified her that he was unable to make it, and so she is considering him excused also.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Well, then let's go ahead and get started. And we're going to start with the 2023 Legislative Agenda Discussion. And we have with us the wonderful Josh Wees of Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Hi, Josh.
Hello, how are you, Councilmember Denson? Mayor Pro Tem, sorry.
Get it right. All right.
Nice to see everyone. Pardon me, good to be with you this afternoon. So as you recall, we were with you a couple of months ago now, just talking through what to expect for the legislative session. And I don't think anything has changed significantly since then in my report to you. I guess maybe the one thing is that we really are hearing from the state budget writers in particular that though state revenues are still coming in at a favorable clip, when they look at the two biennium out, they start to expect that their revenues are going to be decreasing. I'm sorry, let me amend that. One biennium out for the next biennium, for the rest of this biennium, they expect it to continue growing. But once you get into 23, 25, I think it's going to start decreasing a little bit. So really, the message is that we're getting is that, you know, don't expect a lot of new spending this legislative session, which is kind of what budget writers always like to tell you at the beginning of session anyway, just to keep your expectations low. But other than that, the scenarios are looking pretty much similar. So we appreciate it after our conversation last time with you. I know that we asked for your thoughts and ideas about what should or could be on the legislative agenda. And hopefully you all have in front of you the memo that we put together that does a really quick summary of those ideas. And just to be clear, we didn't put a lot of detail in this. We also didn't attribute any of these ideas to any of you. Kind of just wanted to keep it high level at this point. And I would say that if you, my thought was we would walk through each of these ideas. If any of you want to comment on or fill in detail, I think that would be perfectly fine from my perspective. I'm not sure that anybody cares too much about the anonymity of this, but I want to be careful not to attribute or describe ideas in incorrect ways. It maybe isn't what you were thinking. And then, you know, ultimately, what we're hoping is we walk away from today with a rough outline of at least the ideas that you want to see on legislative agenda. And we'll bring back to you a draft and say, okay, did we capture this right? And that would be more the meat on the bones approach. So that's kind of where I'm heading before we go into the document. Are there any questions on process or what I said? Okay, looks pretty good. So the only, starting on transportation requests, I think, and we talked about this last time, the idea that we really, the city does still want and need to see relief from congestion on State Route 16, and even more so the impact that that's having within the city. The transportation projects that we've been pushing for for several years now are still relevant. The one new item that was added was brought up was the idea of a westbound on-ramp that will watch it for State Route 16. So let me, let me just pause there and see if there's any discussion around transportation, those transportation projects and the new idea about the new on-ramp. Do you want us to raise hands, or I guess we should, all right?
Yay, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, you know, Josh, have not changed up there at Route 16. And we've been asking for this kind of help for a long time. It just seems like in the last two months, there's been a significant auto accident on Willatchit, coming or going off of that freeway on-ramp. Probably every third day. We're talking vehicle rollovers every third day. So this is more important than ever because we're certainly more vehicles are traveling that route than ever before. So even though we've wanted it for six, eight years, it's very important now.
Okay, Councilmember Henderson, did you have your hand up? Oh, no, okay.
And I will just say that I think it's important to keep these, keep asking for this, even though we haven't been successful. I don't know what the transportation budget is going to look like. We hear there's a lot of, lot of forecasted carbon money, even more coming in anticipated than what they thought before. We also hear legislators are talking about needing to get more projects for local governments, exactly like what we're talking about. So I think keeping them on, even though we may not be any closer to getting them, I think we have to keep talking about it and keep asking for it would be my sense. Oh, go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
Sorry, just a quick clarification, and I apologize if I should know this, but in terms of that transportation request for the Willatchit westbound on-ramp at SR 16, is that intended to be for the city to design and construct with city funds? Or is that intended to be city to support the state to design and construct that on-ramp?
It was not clear in, in the conversations that we've had.
Okay. Okay, I just, it's, it's not impossible for the city to design and construct an on-ramp, but it seems like it's usually most best placed within WashDOT to do that design and fund and design that construction.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks. Yeah, I was looking at the cost, 500 just for the, well, the Oregon Boulevard, but 400 and 550 respectively for North, for Pioneer Way right turn and Willatchit off-ramp. Are those just design costs? Because I think $500,000 these days is going to get as much.
Well, those costs, and I'm sorry, Josh, I'll jump in on those costs, but those costs were from, I think, 2017 for design and construction. And they're, they're not ramps per se, they're just expanding existing lanes to make a turn lane. So, yeah. If I think, if I remember correctly, Josh did the legislature accept increases to some of those project costs? Or is that something that we need to update based on latest construction numbers?
Yeah, I think it would be incumbent on us to update the costs. I do know that inflation and lack of supply materials is having a huge impact in all construction aspects across the state. But yeah, I think we would need to do that. And I think too, the idea of this new ramp, I mean, I think what we're suggesting here is that we ask for the on-ramp, and we probably don't need to cost it out if it's a DOT project, but we'd just be asking for the state to make that a priority.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes, I'm looking for some guidance on this, probably from Josh, maybe Jeff, I'm not sure. But do we need to be more specific and maybe have two projects? One is specific for a ramp, and the other is to ask for state funds to help with congestion issues on Highway 16? Because I think those are two separate things. They're two separate items, really. Congestion to me is from the bridge through Purdy, we're looking for relief. And the other is we're looking for some change on one access point to Highway 16, or two access, two access points.
No, you, you have that exactly right, given my poor explanation. The idea is here that we, that there's a series of projects that we've been talking about for several years now, as you've gathered, and that's kind of what the first reference is. And then the second, and those are called out in what we've been talking to legislature about, and we have pretty good detail about what they are. And then the second is a new, that we would need to provide some additional detail. And I do think that, to Jeff's point about the fact that it would be asking for this, for WashDOT to do a new ramp, we would not need to be nearly as specific.
Okay.
I lost my document, sorry.
Pardon me, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
With your permission, do you mind if we jumped ahead to the policy issues and specifically the public safety issues? I'm going to be torn away from this meeting here in probably about 10 or 15 minutes. And I not want to miss that section.
No, we definitely need you here for that. Is that okay with you, Mr. Wees?
Oh, of course.
For that.
Absolutely. I could let the chief run this section. This, you know, we have been talking about the, about public safety. So we're down now on the second page where it says policy issues, legislative agenda, and new items, bringing up public safety. And the idea here is to put on the front page our legislative agenda, supporting, we know hospice is going to be working, sheriffs and police chiefs association is going to be working on the legislation to reauthorize vehicular pursuits. There was also, one of the council members brought forward the idea of needing additional funding for law enforcement training. And then I think everybody is aware, or somewhat aware of the fact that the legislature will be talking about their long-term response to the state versus Blake decision on possession of hard drugs. And I think the suggestion here is that we make all three of those requests. I guess I would say on Blake, what we're hearing other local governments say is just making sure that there are sufficient penalties in place. Right now, there's, you know, it's a misdemeanor after three strikes, having some sort of incarceration option on the table so that there's some leverage there to get people into treatment, not necessarily against treatment, but saying that you need some incentive. So I'm not sure if I'm putting words in your mouth, chief, but that's generally what we're hearing.
Now, the buzzwords on the Blake fix, incentivizing treatment, or the magic words that you're going to hear often. So you're right on point there. With regard to the second bullet point and funding, more specifically, I'm hearing that there's going to be a proposal to give a 1/10 of 1% sales tax credit to cities to be used for law enforcement hiring and retention. So that maybe dials that in just slightly more.
And that would be a good question, actually, chief and council for you about whether you want to be that specific about what the, what the actual mechanism is. Yeah, I've heard the same thing, chief, as you're mentioning, that that will be a discussion this session about the additional local authority for 1/10 sales tax credit. I guess the question for you and council is, do you want to just say funding generally? And if the legislature comes up with a more, a different funding mechanism, we would have the ability to support that, your flexibility to support that.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
As I, I understood, chief, you could probably correct me, but there was going to be bills presented to address exactly those things. So even though on our legislative agenda, we can say we support that, but I think it's paramount to all of us as community leaders to personally have our elected officials, whoever they may be in the coming session, to address those things and support those bills, not just the city saying, yeah, we, we support it.
Yeah, I intend on testifying in Olympia, at least on two of these bills, forms of bills that come forth. And I know that Mayor Markley is very eager to speak up as well. And then certainly you guys would be invited as, as council members.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Rodenberg. I think a lot of the council members would appreciate knowing when the testifying is going to be happening so that some of us can come down there and lend our support as well.
We are happy, I guess I should just state it on the record on the recording, we're happy to have you do that anytime and happy to help prepare talking points and those kinds of things when, when it's necessary. So we welcome your participation. Was there any, any, you know, discussion about, it sounds like you would like all three of these public safety items on the agenda? Is that the feeling like the consensus here? Okay.
Like it, yes. And I think your suggestion of the mechanism, the funding mechanism, you know, I think we're flexible with that. We want them to figure that out. We might have opinions as it goes along, but we don't want to, you know, tie their hands as they're trying to figure out how to make this work. Is that everybody concurring with that?
We can nuance that a little bit too, and maybe call out the, the sales tax credit, but leave it open as well. Chief, did I miss anything or anything else there?
I think we're right on point, and I appreciate the flexibility in this meeting. I now need to jump off, so thanks very much.
Can you wait just a moment, chief? Yeah, I'm sorry, but it, can we quantify what that tax incentive might be? We know what the percentage is, anybody, the number at a projected tax?
I have no access to that number.
Okay. Thanks.
I also should have mentioned in my introductory comments that we've, Katrina and the mayor, and we have been in the process of meeting with candidates and delegation. And I will say in particular with Senator Randall, that she continues to indicate that this public safety is a huge issue, and it's something she's willing and interested in digging in on. We've not had a chance necessarily to talk with, I know Representative Caldera, of course, says the same thing. Those are the only folks we've talked to. So I don't want to suggest that anybody's not in that position, but just wanted to give you that feedback that we're, we're getting good support from the conversations we've had so far. It's all right, Mayor Pro Tem, I'll go back up to capital requests.
Yes, that sounds good.
So we talked before about continuing to ask for requests on the sports complex. There was some conversation about whether we ask for, need to ask, to change the specifics of our request so that we're focused now on getting, making sure we get the fields complete versus the pickleball courts and the other aspects we were asking for the last session. That's, we kind of have left that off. And we can talk about more what exactly we think is the right approach there. But something around the sports complex is, is what that bullet's for. We had new ideas come forward. One, admitting that maybe it's not ready for this session, but maybe in the future, the need for funding for this, for senior center. Idea was brought up about asking for, instead of, or maybe not, but asking for more trails, sidewalks, types of projects that are good for both recreation, but also non-motorized transportation. And I will say this is my additional context comment in this, that we know this is, you know, ongoing priority in the Move Ahead Washington package, which is funded with carbon dollars. An idea was brought up about putting forward an affordable housing project. In our experience, you know, cities have been successful supporting affordable housing organizations that are putting projects forward. And if we know of something in the community that, we've seen that be successful before. And then the last new idea there was asking for some resources for the culvert on Donkey Creek, which I know is also a federal priority for you. I will say that we have also been successful with other jurisdictions calling out specific culvert needs and getting those funded in the capital budget. So especially if we think there's a federal match that might be coming, if there's some city dollars that are going towards that, if we chose sort of a braiding of funding sources, that's usually pretty, pretty interesting. All of these, I would say, the legislature likes to see you using existing grant programs wherever possible. So you could see some pushback maybe on the culvert, on the affordable housing, on the trails, because there's the RCO Recreation Conservation Office projects. But those have not been, those are not deal killers. Any questions, conversation on the capital items?
Councilmember Barber.
I was just, I don't think we're ready on a senior center project yet. I, I agree with the parenthetical statement there. And I'm also not sure that we're ready for affordable housing yet, since we don't have that study done that's going to give us some insight. But I do, I'd like to hear from Jeff on the culvert replacement and also on the connectivity projects. If there's anything that we could tie in some other projects that we're working on to get additional dollars from the state to support those projects.
And actually, at this time, I'm going to pass the gavel over to Councilmember Rodenberg, who will pick it up. I'm going to give you on my phone. So thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Sure, Councilmember Barber. Going to the culvert replacement project, we, we are getting ready to, and we've been, Katrina and I have been working with Josh's counterpart, Dale Lern, to look at the latest round of Federal Highway Administration grants for this, for this type of project. Just attended a webinar earlier this week on how to apply for the federal culvert replacement dollars. And so you, on that project specifically, we are getting ready to have a conversation with the stakeholders. Then we're going to come to council through a study session to get some direction. And on parallel tracks, I'm asking that same consultant that's working with us, Parametrics, to provide me a scope and fee to provide grant writing support for the federal grant. So I hope to have that soon, and we'll put it on a council agenda, hopefully in November for consideration. That grant at the federal level is due February 6th, I believe, of next year. So, but we have other sources. We have our own, and Josh, to your point, we, we have stormwater dollars set aside for this that are local funds. We also think that we can hopefully be successful once we get through design and permitting, that when we get to construction, which of course is the high dollar part of this project, that we can plead or make our case to RCO and to Department of Fish and Wildlife to look at state funds also. So I think we're in a good position on that for 2023, 24 biennial budget. We have design permitting for that project. I think all of that is local funds right now. So if we can get through the design permitting, I think that'll show that we have this project well in hand. And then to, I'm sorry, was there? So, and then to the non-motorized connectivity projects. Yeah, so we are looking at TIB fundings. These are essentially, some of these projects would fall well within the TIB improvements, projects that they fund, 38th Avenue in particular. And would they like to be there for that last dollar into construction? So again, we are moving forward with the design and permitting for 38th Avenue. And we did identify in the 23, 24 budget that we'll be requesting funds from TIB for that project. The other projects, those are in the hospital benefit zone. And even some of those might fall within the TIF fee-funded projects, not TBD, not Transition Benefit District, but TIF. So we do have a few different options to look at locally and at the state level. I don't know if any of them would rank well, would be competitive for the federal dollars, though.
Your question. One word to Councilmember Barber. Even though some of these things are far from being shovel-ready, it's important to put them on the agenda somewhere because they may take three, four, five sessions before they come to anybody's attention. So they see that we're continuing to ask for things, even though like the senior center, we're not ready now, or the affordable housing. If we have that noted by the legislators, then they see we're, we're asking for it again, we're asking for it again. So I think it's important to have it on there.
I agree. I was just thinking if we're trying to prioritize.
Okay.
Councilmember, whoop, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you. So are we trying to prioritize? And Josh, what do you think we should be putting on there for capital projects? What do you think we can get for capital projects?
I mean, it seems like the only one that you're feeling is shovel-ready, so to speak, or would be shovel-ready in the biennium is the sports complex, unless I misunderstood any of that. I, I, and I do, you know, that's critical, is that we could actually spend the money in the biennium. You know, I think the bottom line for me is whatever the city's ready to implement is what we should be making a priority.
Okay, so, and so did we have Phase 1B for the sports complex before? Is that what we did? And, and we didn't get very far with it, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, I don't necessarily think that the factors, I don't think that because we weren't successful last time means we shouldn't ask for that again.
Okay.
I don't think it's because it was a bad project or anything. I, I think if there's a compelling case that the plate, that the fields aren't going to get done, you could have a conversation around putting that, that aspect of it forward first.
And I don't think we know about that because that's the why thing, right? So, but, but yes, if we could get some help with 1B, that would be great. And if it was on before, then why not keep it on and get, why not keep it on there?
And, and we do hope to break ground on Phase 1B in 2023.
Shovel-ready. Thank you.
Thank you. If I might, you know, sometimes priority number three, but the likelihood of getting that money is greater than priority one or two. Maybe that is reason to adjust our priorities, that let's get what we can, almost regardless of the priority number it is, is an opinion I have.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Rodenberg, I think that's true. I think I would, I would definitely feel that way if we had a project on here where we had, you know, it pretty well understood how much we needed, knew that it could go forward. And again, if I'm overstating this, it doesn't seem like the other, well, with the exception of Donkey Creek, which it sounds like there's good funding for in other places. The other projects listed here, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. With Donkey Creek and the number of the non-motorized connectivity projects would seem like they have their under fund sources with the senior center and the affordable housing. I mean, it's not, these are still just concepts, I think, if I understand correctly. So I don't even know that it would be that it's a priority one and two, or two and three, sorry. Does that make sense?
Agreed.
I do think, you know, you made the point earlier about talking to the legislature about things that are coming up in the future. I think what's more compelling to the legislature, even than having them on a list, is to be able to say to them, here are the next big things that we think are coming, and we are in the process of designing them. We're in the process of figuring out where it would be sited, how much it would cost, like getting the ducks in a row that you really will need so that in a year or two, when you come forward, it's a real project.
I guess we're ready to move on.
Okay. There was a idea put forward for an operating budget request to do a climate resiliency study for the waterfront. This is definitely something the legislature is thinking about. It's one of those top. Um, this is definitely something the legislature is thinking about. It's one of those topics that they're talking about. Um, the only caveat I would have to this is I know Department of Commerce. Um. Has some money and resources for, I guess, maybe they're doing a climate resiliency, um. Model. Uh, GMA, I'm not saying this very well. Um, GMA component of your comp plan that people can pick up. It's not necessarily grants. Um, but I would just want to be careful that there's not resources available. So this would be something I want to do a little more research on. If you guys, if it is a priority for you and something, something to go forward and maybe ask for.
I saw Carl nodding his head up and down. Did you have a comment, Carl? On that?
Uh, uh, yeah, I do. I suppose, uh, the commerce does, is, is working on a, uh, that's correct. They're working on a, a model element, uh, for comp plans that, that jurisdictions could, um, could adopt. Basically whole cloth or take in and, uh, and modify. And, uh, while it didn't get through, it didn't pass through, uh, legislature in the last session. Um, they were, uh, commerce was directed to draft this model. And then while it's not mandatory jurisdictions could, uh, could use it and adopt it during this, uh, GMA periodic update that's upcoming.
Councilmember Henderson, you had a comment?
Yeah, um, I, I think this is pretty critical. We're already seeing effects to our infrastructure here in Gig Harbor. Even Jeff reported last time that our sewer list station at the end of Harborview is floods at very high tides. Which is just probably the tip of the iceberg. I know he's done a great job, uh, protecting a lot of others, but. Uh, there's no telling what else might be out there that we're have to start dealing with. So this is, this is critical.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments, questions on that one?
Doesn't work, I get.
Okay. Um, let's see, we're going down to policy issues now and on the existing items. So there was a comment about, we have language in there about defending local control. And, um, there was a little bit of debate between a couple of comments that we received about. Not wanting to be as focused on defending local control, um. That, uh. You know, that, that it's not necessarily the position that the city is in necessarily in all cases, that they don't want the legislature to. Act on some of these issues. So. Um. There's definitely some different thinking on council, I guess I would say about local control from where we have been in the past. And then the second item there was just continuing to place emphasis on wanting funding, generally speaking, for culverts. Those are the two existing items.
Yes, councilmember, whoop, you had a comment?
I do. I want to speak strongly in favor of local control. We've been fighting for local control for several years now, and let's not give it up. Uh, that gives us control over a lot of things that, uh, I think that this council has wanted to do. So, uh, I would like to see us keep the, keep the pressure on for retaining local control.
Councilmember Henderson, you had a comment?
Yeah. I think maybe the background behind that particular item was. Focus on local control, but not oppose everything that somebody's asking us to do. I, my concern has always been. We don't want local control to be a. Sort of a shield that says, if we don't, you know, don't tell us what to do, we'll do it. And then we don't do anything just because it's redemptive. So. I like local control. I think we've got a lot of smart people here. We've got a lot of smart residents and smart city staff. I just wanted to see that, uh, a little bit softened so that it's more. Uh, I think, I think you said it, uh, to reword it, I think later on you said something about rewarding it to. Um. Proactively address relevant issues. So it's not that I want to get rid of it. I would like to see it. A little more inclusive, a little bit less, where we're opposed to everything that somebody's going to be telling us. What I, my experience over many, many years is that when I look at what, you know, for instance, the EPA. Imagine what had happened if the EPA had been told, well, we want local control on everything. And we don't want you to tell us what to do, what kind of a mess we would be in. As far as things like leaking underground storage tanks or super fine waste sites. Uh, I like local control. I'd, I'd rather, what I'd rather see is them give us a goal. And we use local control to figure out how to get there. And I think that's great. That was just my two, two cents. So I'm not against local control. I think it's good. I just don't want to use it as an excuse not to do anything.
Thank you. My experience, uh, can be almost the opposite of that, councilmember Anderson. And as much as I've seen where a local control for, uh, let's say emission standards in a particular air quality district. Uh, was done by the local, uh, air quality management district, worked well. And so that local control expanded then to state and they, the state actually took. The same process as the smaller and local control had. That works so well in that state that the federal EPA actually. Uh, so it, it went the other way. So I, I think it does depend exactly like we're saying on the particular issue at hand. Anyone else comment to that? Yes, Councilmember Lichen?
Yes, um, I am definitely in support of maintaining local control. I know along with AWC and, you know, the voters. For us to maintain how we're going to address a problem is important. Um, I do think that. We can't, I, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Henderson, in that. Um, we can't not address an issue just to say local control. And then say, oh, we're not going to do anything about it. We still need to address the issue, but come up with our own way. Um, so I think there's valid points. Made, but I think that overall leaving the control to within the city. Um, is a better thing. I would, I would not necessarily support removing those words. But I would support that we not ignore things like. You know, based on our missing middle housing, what are we going to do to maintain, you know, that availability? Just by saying we're not going to do anything isn't necessarily the answer either. And I think maybe that's what you're getting at. Um, but I, I support maintaining local control.
It's councilmember Henderson.
Yeah, I do too. I agree with you, Brenda. It's just, again, I, like you said, I don't want that to be used in as excuse. Not to do something, especially again, when we talk about something like the, the missing middle housing, we, uh. If we are opposed to everything that the legislature wants to set goals or whatnot and say, we'll fix it. And then we sit back and say, whoo, we, we escaped that one. Let's move on to the next issue. Then we don't get anything done. Then local control was just an excuse. So. Again, I want to stay here on the record. I do not say, I didn't propose taking that word out. I think it needs to be, maybe we need to add something to that statement. It sounds like that we are, we're, we're willing to fix things as long as we can do it. But we may need to be given some either deadlines or some, uh, goals. That's all.
Councilmember Barber.
And I think what I'm saying is sort of following on with what Roger's saying is. We need to come up with five priorities. And I'm not sure that local control in and of itself is one of our five priorities. But it's woven into some of the other priorities. Where our having local control over some of the solutions for missing middle is important. But local control, uh, I'll just use the EPA example, just as an example, is not as important. So I think that that may be what we're trying to do is move it out of its own priorities. So we have room for one of these other ones too. But have it as an emphasis where it's needed. And I think, Josh, you guys have a pretty good handle on where we think it would be important.
I was going to offer. My perspective on this, that the practical impact of this language is. Um, very similar to what councilmember Barber said. It, um, is a theme that runs through or a consideration that runs through everything that we look at. On local government's behalf. So it almost doesn't matter on the subject matter of the bill. If it has a, you know, an aspect of it that removes local control. We usually flag it as a concern and then have a conversation about the specific bill and make a decision about. You know, very similar to what councilmember Henderson said, how do we message around it? Is this, is this a full stop? Is it a, you know, we don't really, we can live with some amendments. Um. But it is, it is different than the other items on the agenda where we're actually asking the legislature to proactively do something for us. Um, so I guess, you know, however, I really do think however you all want to, uh, address this is going to work. Um. But one option would be to move it to the policy document. Which is really where we keep, you know, the majority of things where we're saying, hey, that we know this is on our radar. We're going to be bringing it up to you when we see it. Um, but it's not something we're specifically asking the legislature to do for us.
In regard to the things that you say flag, uh, particular, uh, bill, uh. The fact that they might mandate something, uh, that we have to do without funding it. Uh, overburden our local revenue, our, our local funds, uh. To the point where other things are lost. So that's where some control, I think, is necessary on the local level. It is, uh, let's not. Have things mandated without funding from the same people that mandated.
That's an interesting example because that is unfunded mandates or underfunded mandates. Is not anywhere on either of our documents, but it is absolutely a concern that we keep in mind when we're reviewing bills and proposals. Um, so. You know, a lot of this does come down to what are we talking about during session? How are we, we reacting during session?
Yeah.
And that's, I guess I would put unfunded mandates and local control kind of in the same pocket. Like you said, when they come up. You let us know what's going on. And we can address them in one-offs.
I, I have a question for you, uh, Josh. Uh. Do we, do you feel that, uh, we as council people or the city, uh, does enough to. Personally support the things that we say we're concerned with as far as going to Olympia and as far as actually. Uh. Putting our actions where our mouth is. Is there more that we could do?
Trying to think about how to say this, um. I think there is greater opportunity through, uh. Because of circumstances that we're out of all of our control going forward for you all to be, ha- have more of an impact. Um, and we are definitely on a great path here to be, um. To be accomplishing that.
I think I speak for all council members and we're certainly willing to do that, uh. Uh, whatever it, it, whatever you suggest. You know, where the impact would be the best span. Thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate that very much. Um, let's see here. How, how, uh, important to you all is that I'm just trying to take temperature here. We, in the past, we have. Asked for the legislature to fund the culvert, local culverts at some level, not as a specific. For any specific culverts, but just as a system. Um, just curious if that's still a top priority for you.
Yeah. Councilmember Lichten?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to clarify, Josh, if you would. I heard you mention earlier that if we ask for specific culvert projects, that we might be more successful. Than just a general, you know, don't ask for this to be done unfunded, unfound, you know, unfunded mandate type of thing. What's your opinion on that again?
Yeah, I think. Um. It is helpful to the association of cities. Um, it is helpful for sort of a communication message. To be talking about the need for the state to be helping locals to meet the broad culvert obligation. Um, I would put that in the same, um. That, that doesn't necessarily need to be an agenda item. It could be a policy document item. Um. I do think, and I'm not sure, are we going to move the needle? We might move the needle a little bit on that. That's a pretty big ask. Right? Statewide big ask. If we have specific projects and, and we under, you know, can explain the project really well, and there's a variety of funding sources and the state just needs to come in with. A couple hundred thousand dollars, that is a tangible, something that we could in all likelihood accomplish.
Okay, so like the specific Donkey Creek, you know, the planning and the, the matching jobs and things. Okay, great, thanks.
No, I know. Go ahead.
Sorry, I know Councilmember Benson had her hand up and then.
I saw that. disappeared again.
Well, yes, I would just say I think we could do both. I think we could ask for the specific project and we need to ask for general assistance with culvert projects. We've got a lot to do as well as the other local government.
Thank you, Councilmember Benson.
So the, those are the items for the main agenda, um, piece. And so, and the rest are for our policy document, which again, you know, as a reminder is. Pretty much a document that we use between amongst us. Um, to give us a little bit of guidance as we're assessing bills during legislative session. Um, for things that we know are of particular importance. The policy document is not necessary. Uh, from our perspective, um, but it helps us get a flavor of those other issues that we should be watching out for. It's more helpful, like you had, um. Uh, what's a good example here? Um. Supporting infrastructure funding. Um, knowing that when conversations come up about the public works assist, what to do with the public works assistance account. Um, that that's something that you'll want us to be paying particular attention to. Um. But not all of this, like we include, we have had in years past. Or I should say we currently have in here, um, the wastewater nutrient cap. And, um, that was something that we were doing a little bit of work to help you on. I think we kind of just want to capture it as almost more like a work plan than necessarily, um, a policy document. Um, I don't know if that's still necessary. And I know ecology is pretty far down the line in terms of implementation of that nutrient cap. Um, so that's kind of, that's the context for this policy document. Um. We are recommending here that there's some existing items that we think are still. Relevant. We do think that some, um, the OPMA length flexibility language, we should remove. As well as the transportation benefit district sales tax issue, because both of those were actually addressed in twenty-two. And then, um, there was suggestion about some additional items to add. Um, and maybe if it's okay, if I, I'll just keep going here. I'll just run through those quickly. Um, the climate change legislation, you were very clear last session. We had a specific conversation about that, that that's a priority for you. And you want to be engaged on those issues. Um, supporting a healthy business climate. Um, there was a comment that was, uh, helping. Uh, doing anything possible to help business and government be more aligned. Um, that might be helpful for us if that's something you want to include to have a little more specific conversation about, uh, with us. Housing, you know, we have, um. We have been doing our housing work under the local control umbrella. Um, we have not had, uh, this session, we haven't had a proactive. Um, housing position. Um, and that would be something that, you know. We should consider, we should talk about.
Um, Councilmember Benson, yes, you have your hand up?
Yes, I actually just had another idea based on some. I don't know how council would feel about this, but what about asking the state to look at expanding the senior property tax exemption program? There's a lot of seniors and disabled that are having a hard time paying their property taxes with as much value to come up in the past couple of years. There's a lot of seniors and disabled that are having a hard time paying their property taxes with as much value to come up in the past couple of years. A lot of talk about maybe expanding that to cover more thought for council.
Can say as a senior, I certainly support that. Director Langham, you had your hand up a, a minute ago. Did we skip by your topic?
Uh, yes, and I don't know. I was just gonna comment a little bit on that wastewater nutrient cap, but. I don't know if it now is the time. I don't want to interrupt what Councilmember Benson was saying.
Other comments on what Councilmember Benson had to say? I support that. I think uh. The city should as well.
I do too.
So can we put that on there, Josh?
Got it.
Moving on.
Adding something about um, supporting. Affordable housing, making affordable housing attainable, but also making retain local control. You know, that, that clearly is the tension that we've been struggling with last several years that you, you and you and all the other jurisdictions across the state. And then. One about supporting a proactive, putting out a proactive approach that would create new tools, incentives and revenues that cities could use. To help increase housing supply and address affordability. And that is very consistent, I would say, with what we know about what AWC has been considering in their housing work group over the summer. Conversation around behavioral health, substance abuse, um, the need for additional services. You know, some detail there around access to behavioral health. You know, additional support for co-responder programs, diversion programs, kind of a similar comment about just needing additional. Tools and programs there to help people. That's gonna be my summary of. Um, and then the last one was around electrical vehicle infrastructure and. Trying to provide uh incentives or resources for electric vehicle charging stations on city-owned property. I think that's for the public, if I understand that correctly. And then supporting uh funding for electrification of city of, of municipal seats, which are two separate. Issues there. And I do think that electrification is obviously going to continue to be a huge topic for the legislature, as will behavioral health. I should have said that before too. So those were the suggestions that we had for new items. Added to the policy document. And I think the question, you know, any feedback you have on things you want to add or existing items that you want to remove. Happy to take that. Input, that's the question.
Councilmember Henderson.
Uh, could we pivot back to Jeff and you had a, you were gonna say something about the nutrient cap issue, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna give a quick update on where we are. With our treatment plant and our analysis. So we have a contract with Corolla engineers who are going through. Uh, our processes at our treatment plant, our levels of uh nitrogen coming out of the neutri, the treatment plant. And looking to optimize or provide some options on how to optimize our treatment plant. I think that ourselves, the city on its own, we're doing fairly well, but we will know more by, I think it's March of next year and we will report back to council. If we think that we're going to be okay based on the nutrient general permit that's been issued, or if we will need to look at other ways to either. Uh, fund improvements, or we need to look at other ways to find or work with ecology to find other revision to our permit.
Thank you. So council see any need for changes or uh additions or elimination of the policy document? Looks like we're happy with it. Oh, yes, Councilmember Barber.
I was just gonna say I'm happy with the list, but I'm wondering if this, if Josh needs us to prioritize or provide other input. Uh, on this, are we okay with the list as it stands now from? You guys have to work with it, Josh, is I guess what I'm asking.
I think we're okay. For the most part, we're okay with it. I do think two things. Housing, I mean, we probably need to have a little bit more discussion after AWC comes out with their proposal. About specifically where the city wants to be trying to push on the messy middle um approach. And whether regardless of where that fits in your documents, we just need to know where you want to go on that.
And when is that out?
I, I'm gonna have to get back to you about that. I can't remember. I know they've been meeting with external stakeholders. And I, I may not know actually, but let me find out.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, um, yeah, Josh, maybe you can go back and distill then what you've heard today into what. Would look for you as to be what you march to. And then get that back with us and then we can say, yeah, that's where we're going. And with the knowledge that we're kind of waiting for the AWC guidance on their housing policy. It would be helpful.
Yeah, happy to do that. The other thing I want to add is just that um. Items like behavioral health, that section which is. Fairly specific, but the way behavioral health policy is happening in legislature. Teasing out where those specifics fall and how they're treated is challenging. And so that's a good example of a topic where. We would want to figure out, are you wanting to see everything on behavioral health? Are you wanting to, which is would be a lot? Um, are you want to, wanting us to focus in on a couple? Specific things, um, that one's pretty broad. I'm not quite sure how. You know, how we would work through that. The same is a little bit the same is true of climate change, honestly. Um, I know that's an interest to you, but it's something that they spend a lot of time working on. And do you want to see everything they're doing?
You know, the uh. Substance abuse issues under behavioral health. Uh, maybe helped by any funding the city may receive from the opiate uh lawsuit. So that can play a part in there is as well. I think you sign up for it and you know, we got it. Where's the check?
Yeah.
So that could help us along those lines. Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, um, so on the, the mental health and the opiate. Um, or substance abuse resources. If we had like a specific program or policy or something we're proposing, could we ask? You know, for support to cities to implement some of these things within their own jurisdictions, have something a little bit more specific. Um, I know that we're having some kind of very cursory talks. Um, and we're finishing up our budget talks about possibly implementing some type of local program. Um, you know, could we request, you know, support for those type of programs within communities? Would that be? Something you'd be looking for on that whole mental health topic?
I, I think that would be much more effective. Just a general statement to the legislature about behavioral health substance use.
Okay, so if we show we're actually trying to do this program, here's what we're looking for. Okay, great, thank you.
And if that's something, I mean, is that a legislative agenda priority? Is there something there that we want to ask for?
Well, I think we still need to have talk um amongst our council. I don't want to speak on behalf of, you know, anyone else. I know that I've had conversations with both the mayor and city administrator. Um, who are supportive of doing something like this. We need to look at our budget and see how we're going to propose funding it. And if there is overall council support before we could bring it to you, but that's going to be happening, I think in the next um week or two. Okay, all right.
Yeah, and it's not too late. If that comes together, um, it's not too late to add something.
Great, we'll keep you posted. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Now that's it. Councilmember Henderson.
No, that's okay. Next time.
So I think what I heard Councilmember Henderson say before was. Take from this conversation what we think the additions and changes are and, and bring you a proposal and. Um, I'm comfortable with that as long as there's the grace with you to recognize that. Um, my interpretation might be different than, than somebody else's and we can still make changes as we're going forward. So. Okay, I see nodding heads. Um, so yeah, we'll do that and we'll schedule a time to run through it again in more detail.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Member Lichten, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just had one last comment in that, um, Josh, I really appreciate it when you tell us. How we're going to be most effective. And what you think is most realistic and how we can support you. Um, I think that feedback is critical because we can ask for the world, you know, we can ask for lots of things, but what's realistic? Um, and to keep our, you know, to keep our wants and needs in the right category, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to do that. And I.
Thank you.
Appreciate this dialogue very much and I appreciate very much the path that we are on at this point. So thanks for.
Something practical and achievable, I think is what you're saying.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, while keeping all of our wants and needs, but just what can we really get in any of this time? So I appreciate that feedback.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for your time, Josh.
Yeah, thank you. Nice to see everybody. Have a good rest of your afternoon.
All right, council, we can move on to the second discussion item. Uh, twenty-two comprehensive plan amendments. Uh, and we're going to turn this over to Principal Planner, Carl DeCimas.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Protem Rodenberg, uh, and good afternoon. Protem Tim Rodenberg, that's right. That's a, I was wondering how to address that. I wasn't sure. So I just thought, well, just go with it and then they'll tell me what to do. So thank you for doing that.
Nope, no formality needed here.
I know, I know. Um, well, it will thank you uh for that in the introduction. And uh, it's great to see everybody. Thank you for having us. Uh, we really appreciate it. Um, and as uh, as. Mayor Protem Tim Rodenberg had said, we're here to uh. To uh introduce the twenty-twenty-two uh docket of the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan for this year. Um, there were four docketed items. And I with, I don't want to get into too much detail because I'm about to turn this over to um our, the two senior planners that are with us here. Today, but I did want to say um here for you all that um how much. Uh, I personally and how much the city, um, I can say city staff appreciate the work that Robin. And Roxy have been doing, um, and uh since they've joined the city, uh, it's just been really. Amazing. And uh, for me personally, uh, you know, picking up some extra duties here as the city's been sort of transitioning a little bit. They have really just been rock stars, just superstars all the way around and really just jumped in with both feet and picked these things up and I just can't say enough. So. Um, with that, um, I would like to turn it over to, I think Robin's gonna get us started. Um, and then Roxy will jump in from there. And of course, I'm here to help with questions and um any facilitation that I can do. But Robin, go ahead and take it away.
Okey dokey. Uh, good afternoon, uh, members of the council. Uh, I have a very brief PowerPoint that I will. Torture you with just a little tiny bit. There we go. Sorry, trying to make it big. I need things as big as possible when I'm looking at a small screen. Um, as Carl said, I, I, I'm gonna start us off with an overview of the twenty-twenty-two docket. Uh, talk a little bit about the meetings that we've had with the planning commission. And then I will be presenting the first item on the docket and uh hand things off to my colleague, uh, Roxanne. So uh, the four items were approved by your city council on February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Those items included uh revisions to the parks recreation open space element. As well as portions of the capital facilities element. Changes to the utilities element and incorporating language pertaining to climate change and sustainability. And the last item was adding stormwater management plan, uh, action plan, snap to those in the know. Uh, to the city stormwater comprehensive plan. Uh, docket item number two, uh, we, we proposed to pull that and not move forward uh this year. Um, we need more discussion internally and some clarification. We do anticipate uh incorporating those changes into the twenty-twenty-four uh periodic update. So uh, in terms of uh, the planning commission, we held two study sessions, uh, October. Uh, August and October. And then uh, last week on the twentieth, we held the public hearing. Uh, we did get a recommendation from the commission to approve the twenty-twenty-two docket with the exception of item number two. Uh, in terms of the, the parks item, the topics of discussion really were about clarifying what the planning commission's role. Uh, was um because uh, and I'll speak a little bit more. Because the pros plan uh that that city council op, also adopted in February. Uh, that was adopted by resolution. And so the planning commission had not had a chance to dive into that and look at that. And so there was a little bit of confusion about um what they were doing in terms of uh the recommendation for um. For this amendment. Uh, but we got through that. I think they understood. Um, that that pros plan uh went through a great deal of scrutiny and, and public participation. So uh, again, uh, the twenty-twenty-two pros plan uh was approved by resolution uh by the council in February. Lots and lots of uh public engagement and partnership with uh the, the Parks Commission. Um, and that pros plan made several changes to the parks inventory. They changed the classification system and also restated some of the goals and policies. And these changes created then inconsistencies with the language in chapter eleven. The parks element and portions of chapter thirteen, uh, the capital facilities element. And again, uh, the inconsistencies inventory. Classification and restatement of goals and, and policies, nothing really more substantive than sort of some, some language uh changes. So we are proposing to amend those sections of chapter eleven and chapter thirteen to conform to uh everything that was laid out in the adopted pros plan. Um, again, the points of discussion more so with the planning commission than I think with uh with your council, but. Um, the, the amendments reflect the plan that has already been adopted. And went through the, the public process. None of the changes uh reflect anything that was not in the pros plan or adopted. And the proposed amendment, uh, this item uh does not increase density or any of the items actually. Uh, do not increase density or intensity of permitted development. Uh, or amend land use maps. And that language actually comes out of um the um. Uh, the required findings um that we can also uh go through. Maybe not, uh, well, we can talk about anything you want uh today. Um, but the findings were laid out uh for the commission and, and we'll talk about that uh again. Um, so in terms of next steps, uh, the um first reading, we have tentatively scheduled uh before the council on November fourteenth. Returning for the public hearing and second uh reading on the twenty-eighth. And then um, another point that was maybe a little bit confusing, I think for the commission. We've gone back and forth a little bit on whether to just take the pros plan as adopted and make that. Uh, chapter eleven, make that the parks element. But because the, the capital improvement plan, the, the budgeting um has not been reconciled. That would have created yet another inconsistency. So, so we are um. Uh, planning to incorporate that pros plan and make that the pros element basically. Um, when we do the, the periodic update for twenty-twenty-four. And I think that is all I have. Uh, I am happy to answer questions. Um, or if you want to move on, um, Roxanne will present the next two items. Thank you so much.
You're on mute.
You might be calling on me.
Can you hear me now?
Can hear you now.
Yeah, she would have had to have taken her slide down. Uh, it's member Henderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Robin. That was a, a, a good overview of it. I had one quick question. Um, in the pros plan, the, the new one, twenty-twenty-two. Um, thank you, Robin. That was a, a, a good overview of it. I had one quick question, um, in the pros plan, the, the new one, twenty-twenty-two. I believe the, the level of service calculation for the, uh, protocol was changed from, I think acres of park per hundred people or thousand or whatever it is to, uh, a more refined, um, I, I'm pulling a blank right now exactly what we came up with, but is that going to be adopted? Or was, are we just going to keep with the acres per hundred people or a thousand people?
That's a great question. And, and we did talk about that a little bit at the, the study session with the commission. It, the pros plan sort of teased it. It kind of, it, it put it out there as, um, hey, instead of, uh, acres per capita, which is a very sort of cursory blunt, uh, way of, of measuring whether our parks actually fulfill their role and are what our, what our community wants, um, there's a more nuanced way of measuring that, but they didn't actually, they, the plan didn't actually propose making that change. We can certainly talk about that. Um, when we're looking at the update, uh, or the, the, yeah, the periodic update. Um, but it was, it was sort of just a little teaser. So, um, it, it introduced language that I think makes a lot of sense. Um, and you know, we do have, uh, a new, uh, parks manager coming on board. So I think that's a conversation that we can have moving forward to introduce something that's much more, not just robust, but really, you know, what do people think? It's very interactive. Are these, um, are these parks and, and open spaces and our trail system, are they working, uh, the way that we want them? And, and we can come up with our own way of measuring level of service rather than acres per, per capita.
So that'll be up for discussion when you bring it forward to us.
Uh, as a part of this amendment or when we?
Yeah. I mean, is it too late to say let's adopt that?
Yeah, it's, it, it's pretty late. For the twenty-twenty-two, um, docket, that would be, because it doesn't actually, it, it talks about what, and I can't, I'm spacing on the name of, of the, the, one of the organizations, sort of a national park, um, association of some sort that rolled this out. We don't have, we don't have the metrics yet. Um, I think that, that again, that's something I would look to, um, incorporating in, in the, uh, in the update, uh, the periodic update for twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Robin. Uh, council member Barbara. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Um, Robin, I have a, a question and I was trying to go through both council member Henderson and I were on the Parks Commission and on the subcommittee that wrote the plan. But I'm trying to recall and trying to find on a draft when the pros plan, the pros plan that the Parks Commission wrote and then the council approved was for twenty-twenty-two through, I believe, twenty-twenty-five.
Oh, jeez.
I'm, what I'm wondering is how we get more, um, I'll call it in sync. Because I remember when we were writing it and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong here too, but it was, we were writing it and then it went to council for approval and then it goes back and it's added to the crop plan. By the time it gets added to the crop plan, it's almost done. I mean, not almost done, but you know, it's, we're kind of out of sync on how everything's getting done, approved and implemented. And I wonder how we can make that more cohesive going forward.
Well, again, I guess so. And, and there was language, um, during that adoption process and actually language in the pros plan itself that suggests that it should become the comprehensive plan element. Um, and they're, they're just there. So I guess we're, we're taking the first step to, to at least making, uh, getting rid of the, the more glaring inconsistencies about inventory. How many parks do we actually have and the naming convention and so forth? That seemed like the most sort of, uh, sort of the first order of business. Um, I think, I think once we do sort of marry them and maybe, and maybe, um, include things like we were just discussing with level of service, um, metrics and, uh, and anything else that, that maybe got overlooked or wasn't incorporated into the twenty-twenty-two plan. We can update that as well. It's a heavier lift, but it, you know, depending on, on what we're, um, uh, what changes, um, your council wants to see, what the community wants to see. I mean, it is going to be, all of the elements are, are, are up for review, right? As part of the, the update. And so we're going to have, uh, public participation and outreach again, um, for all of these elements, um, conceivably. And so maybe we get more feedback at that point. And then instead of changing two different things, we're incorporating the pros plan, updating it to reflect whatever information we get eh, at our outreach events. Um, and then that is the plan. And we have one pros plan that is actually in our comprehensive plan. That's, at least that's my idea. Carl, yeah, if you, if you have a more articulate way of, of, of putting it, please.
I, I do see your hand is up.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a more, I don't have a more articulate way of putting it necessarily, but, uh, I, I did want to chime in and note that. So it is a six-year, the pros plan is, is a six-year plan.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm reading that from the executive summary because I'm no expert, um, in parks planning by any means. Um, but, uh, it is a six-year plan and, and you're exactly right, Councilmember Barbara, is that, that there is some, we're, we're always kind of letting, in, in planning, there's always this misalignment between when plans need to get updated and certain elements get updated. And so we are always kind of, and in some ways, in some ways, there's always these little inconsistencies that are really, really annoying, um, to planners. I can tell you that. Uh, and we'd really love if the legislature just lined all these things up for us. Um, but it doesn't seem to work that way. So, uh, if, and, and I don't know, if you'll recall, we, we did something similar to what Robin was describing, uh, in bringing, you know, if we're, if we're, if we were able to bring the parks plan and the pros plan in as the element in the comp plan in order to at least make things a little more consistent, um, I not have two competing plans out there and have to do this step and then this step, you know, to keep everything consistent. We did something like that with the transportation element. You know, we took the, we took that plan and we said, look, we're, we're tired of having to make these changes. We're constantly dealing with transportation and make a change here. And then this is inconsistent and then we update the growth numbers here. We have to go back. So we just made that the element. And I think the more of that we can do going forward, and of course we have to coordinate with, um, with Jeff and his team, um, with all of these plans, you know, and they're, they're constantly managing these things and have to update them. So it, it is kind of, it is a bit of a constant, a constant struggle, but you know, what we're really hope, trying to do this year is really just make this consistent. So we have one consistent, um, parks plan going forward for now. And then when we get into twenty-twenty-four periodic update, we can have these discussions again about the best way to move forward with it so that we, um, you know, all agree on, on the process.
Okay, that make, that makes sense. It's, it just, as you said, it's like making sausage. Sometimes the recipe comes up crooked.
Yes, absolutely. It's a great way of putting it.
Is it?
Yeah, trust me. If you've been on what we were doing, it was making sausage.
Go ahead, Robin. I, there's, does appear to be any more questions on, on that?
Okay, I, well then turn it over to Roxanne Robles to, uh, carry us through the next two items. Thank you.
Jeff had his hand up at the end of that discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, well, I thank you, Councilmember. Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, following up what, uh, Carl was talking about related to transportation plan. Uh, if you remember correctly, we updated the transportation element in two thousand eighteen. Um, we're, we don't, we are updating the transportation element as part of this update of the comprehensive plan, uh, in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, and so we could do that with the pros plan potentially also. And I think our CO requirement is just, we have to update it at least every six years. Once we update, if we were to update the pros plan in twenty-three, twenty-four, it would be a more minor update, just like we're doing with transportation element. It's much less expensive to update the transportation element now than it was in twenty-eighteen. So I mean, that, that is something we could consider in twenty-three, twenty-four for the pros plan.
Thank you, Jeff. Now it's back to Roxanne.
All right. Thank you, uh, Robin. Let me just share this. All right, everyone can see that. Okay, so, uh, I'm going to be talking about the climate action plan. I'll need a bit more, uh, or excuse me, the climate action amendment. Um, climate action plan is something different. We'll talk about that, um, as well as the stormwater management action plan. Lots of action today. So, uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about the process of developing this amendment. We convened, um, a, an advisory body, the CCC pack, the Climate Change Conference of Plan Amendment Committee. Um, we had five educational meetings, uh, or sessions throughout last spring and summer. Uh, we'll talk more about what the kind of content of each of those was. I know, uh, council members Luke and Henderson were part of that. So you may have heard about some of what we learned from them. Um, so the idea behind the CCC pack was to learn about topics related to climate change, kind of level set around what it is that we're talking about, what the scope is for a jurisdiction, a city, like, uh, the city of Gig Harbor. Um, and also talk to other regional organizations about what they're doing to address climate change, um, within their capacities. Then we wanted to draft, uh, an amendment to the comprehensive plan and incorporate climate change in a meaningful way. Um, and then of course we're going through the adoption process right now. And then also just to set expectations around this, I feel like I've probably talked to you all about this before. This amendment is not meant to be a complete overhaul of how we approach, um, climate mitigation and adaptation within our com- comprehensive plan or within the city. This is meant to basically authorize the climate action plan, which we now have funding for and will be completing next year. Um, and then based on the information we get from that climate action plan, we'll be able to make more substantive, uh, recommendations, goals and policies within the twenty-twenty-four comprehensive plan update. So I just want to let you all know that this amendment is probably going to be a lot smaller scope than a lot of people want. And that's okay, because it's kind of setting the groundwork for bigger changes down the line. Any questions about that process? Okay. So we started in May, level setting around what climate change is and why it's important to address it. Um, in June, we heard from PSRC's transportation planner around what they're doing, uh, to plan for transportation and reducing uh, end of pipe, uh, emissions around the sound. We heard, uh, from Beth Delio of Climate Solutions and Kathleen Petrie, who works on green building code throughout King County on how we reduce energy use and, um, fossil fuel gas use in buildings. We also talked about transportation and land use and their intrinsic connection in July with, uh, futurewise and climate solutions again. And then on the twenty-seventh, we heard from the Washington Department of Commerce about their climate change model element that, um, Carl mentioned was, has been drafted and is in kind of a testing phase, but it did not get through, um, the state congress as a requirement for this twenty-twenty-four comprehensive plan update process. So, um, the climate change element, uh, the model that they have has two parts. One is adaptation, one is resilience. Um, and it has basically like a menu of different goals and policies that, um, jurisdictions can work through that will work for, you know, so that it can be more tailored towards, uh, your jurisdiction and also kind of makes the lift a little less heavy since you already have kind of a suite of choices. Um, so that's rolling out in the next probably couple of months. Um, we also heard about, um, waste reduction from Pierce County. And then I talked a little bit about equitable community, uh, engagement. So, um, we asked the members of the CCC pack and it was a twenty percent group of both internal and external stakeholders. Uh, we asked them to submit two goals of policies, uh, based on the content of each subsequent, uh, educational session. So got a whole bunch of different recommendations. Um, they were all over the place. They were all really great. Some people just sent me like fully complete, uh, comprehensive plan elements. It seemed like some people were super duper engaged in this and, um, so basically took everything that they, um, had given me and sorted it into each of the elements. Not every element was covered, but, um, many were. Um, so collected all that feedback and then, uh, based on the feedback that I received, looked for the most frequently repeated priorities. And then, uh, because there were like, I think over forty different goals and policies that we received. Um, and then I distilled those priorities into a man, more manageable set of goals and policies that we could put into this comprehensive plan amendment. So any questions about the development process before we go into the proposed goals and policies? Okay. Um, so these are the, uh, or the goal and the associated policies that were developed. Um, these have been through the CC review by the CCC pack in August and then the planning commission has reviewed these twice as well. So the overarching goal is to develop and adopt a climate action pa- plan so that, um, we can have a greenhouse gas emissions inventory and develop climate mitigation strategies for all the different things that we have going on in the city. Um, through a lens of equity and social justice. That was very important to the planning commission. Um, the policies reflect kind of more specific, um, things that were prioritized in these, in the feedback that I received. So, and they're meant to kind of capture a broad brush of things that often come out when you're looking at climate change mitigation and adaptation. So developing a baseline of greenhouse gas emissions to, so we can inform these strategies, uh, appropriately, uh, diversifying energy sources, uh, to make a goal of getting away from solely fossil fuel. Um, and also, uh, opening us up to, you know, any other potential renewable energy sources. Um, considering climate change in all planning processes, both development review and long range review. And then, uh, collaborating regionally with a different state and local, uh, organizations that are doing similar work so that no work is duplicated and we're sharing data and whatnot. All right. Any questions about, all right, here they come. Lee.
Well, I just have, I have one and I, I think it's easy and it's probably, uh, develop and adopt a climate action plan through a lens of e- equity and social justice. How would that be viewed through any other lens? What does that meant?
That's a great question. So oftentimes when we think about climate change mitigation and adaptation, sometimes we think about, um, what technology can we throw at things? What are the ways that we can maybe shift externalities? Like a lot of times, I think in the, like, sometimes externalities like industry, energy generation have been put into places that are like less desirable or may, meaning lower income. Um, and so making sure that we don't put externalities or pollution in places that are already burdened by environmental pollution, I think is very important. And then usually, uh, communities of color and lower income communities are typically the most burdened with climate change, um, effects such as urban heat island effect, um, extreme heat, extreme cold. And so making sure that when we're looking at how we adapt, we looked at it equitably and we don't just focus on maybe like the downtown or look at neighborhoods, which are the most resource and the loudest. If that makes sense. Yeah.
I don't see any other questions.
So the planning commission did it. They're perfect. Great news. Okay, if there really aren't any other comments, um, go ahead, uh, Commissioner Henderson or Councilmember Henderson, excuse me.
I was a commissioner once, but, um, thank you, Roxy. That was very well done. Um, I just had a question on the climate action plan. So this is going to be incorporated into our comprehensive, uh, plan update. And then sometime next year, we're going to start on the climate action plan.
Great question. Um, I, yeah, I neglected to kind of go. Great question. I, yeah, I neglected to kind of go through where we were with the Climate Action Plan. So if, just a refresher, the city received $76,000 from the Department of Climate, excuse me, Department of Commerce for early climate action planning. So that reimburses the city for staff time to do things such as the CCCPAC and also this Comp Plan Amendment. And then it also gives us funding for a consultant, and we did interviews on Monday for two climate action consultants, Climate Action Plan consultants. And we think we have, we think we have a strong contender. So we will definitely keep you all updated on that as that progresses. And then our funding goes through June of 2023. So we have until June 2023 to develop this plan. And then hopefully that's going to be great timing to seg into the Comprehensive Plan Update. So we'll be able to get a lot of targeted adaptation and mitigation strategies to funnel into the Comprehensive Plan Update.
Okay, so then, once the Climate Action Plan is developed, then you're going to want to put that in the 2024 Comprehensive Plan, which means we can't take action on anything the Climate Action Plan recommends until the Comprehensive Plan is amended. Is that at the end of 2024? Or is it like, we, I, what I'm trying to get at is, maybe bottom line is, when can the city start doing something? That's my question. I mean, we can have stuff, and you're going to tell me, I just don't want to hear that we're going to, you know, we have to wait till 2025 to start doing anything. That's a long time, and you and I have agreed, we all agree that we got to do something sooner than later. And I just don't want to be, maybe if you can explain what we can do and what we can't do, that might be useful.
Yeah, that's a good question. So I would say that we currently are doing something because we are going through this amendment process, and we have, we are like on the brink of hiring a climate consultant. So I think this plan, developing this Climate Action Plan, is really the best thing that we can be doing, and we are like basically doing it now. I don't think that it's in the city's best interest to forge ahead with investments or planning if we don't know what exactly the city needs in terms of climate action planning. You know, if we were to throw any money or technology at things that seem like a good idea, but we didn't have a real strategy for either the short or long term, that might be money that isn't well spent. Carl, did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I just, I would just note, and that's all exactly right. I, but I would also note that there, we don't know what those recommendations are going to be that come out of the Climate Action Plan. Some of them might be goals and policies, right? Likely there will be a lot of those that will, that will be able to backfill into the 2024 periodic update of the Comprehensive Plan. But there may be actions that we could take tomorrow, you know, come right out of that Climate Action.
Which is what I, which is what I'm trying to get at is
Gotcha.
Nice to know what actions we can take. Once, I agree that we have to have a Climate Action Plan done. But it's like a big ship that's sinking, and we've got to study on what kind of lifeboats we should be building. Well, we've got some rings here we can start throwing out in the ocean, so let's try to make sure that we don't, it's not paralysis by analysis. I understand that we have to have a plan. That's good and great, great work on getting that, the consultants on board for the Climate Action Plan. So like Carl said, whatever we can do, let's say the low-hanging fruit would be much appreciated after the Climate.
Yeah, I understand the concern. I think that we'll, we'll definitely emphasize that with the consultants. We get them on board.
Cool.
Okay. Did you have another question, Councilmember Henderson?
Oh, gosh, I put my hand up. Nope.
So once we get this Comprehensive Plan Amendment going and we're able to develop and adopt a Climate Action Plan, then, like I said, we'll use it to inform the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Potential future projects, depending on council interest, are an ongoing climate change body and, you know, other climate change projects implementation. I'm sorry, Councilmember Henderson, I wasn't trying to be, what's the word, pedantic. I know that you understand short and long-term planning. I just want to make sure that that's out there, that I understand people do feel anxious about climate change. It's very real anxiety and a very real thing that people feel. But, you know, just for the general public, it's, it's good to plan. That's why we're all here.
You have my support.
Okay, great. All right, so if there's no further questions, I'll move on to the Stormwater Management Action Plan, the SMAP. This one is a little bit more technical. I don't know that you all will have that much feedback on it, but it is a technical document, so we want to keep you up to speed on what it is and why we're doing it. So the city is a permutee of the Western Washington Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit. I'm going to just call that the permit, try and say that 10 times fast. So this permit allows us as a city to discharge treated stormwater into waters of the state, AKA rivers, lakes, and the sound. So there's quite a few, we're surrounded by water, we need this to be able to discharge stormwater, and it is a state requirement. So we need to have the Stormwater Management Action Plan adopted by the end of next March. So we're already a permutee, and then this, this new section from 2019 requires us to adopt a Stormwater Management Action Plan. It's about the process and a product. So there's three parts to the Action Plan. One is a receiving water assessment. We'll go through that. That means looking at what the receiving waters, Puget Sound, Hood Canal, what they what are the high nutrient loads, what are the contaminants that currently exist? Basin prioritization, we'll talk about that. What is the most important stormwater basin within the city that we want to investigate with our Stormwater Action Plan? And then the Stormwater Management Act Plan is how are we going to manage stormwater within that priority basin? And so two questions that this map is meant to address. How can existing stormwater problems be addressed strategically? And how can the city accomplish water quality goals while meeting future population and density targets? I know stormwater is a big topic when we're thinking about development in the city. I want to just mention that the SMAP is separate from our Stormwater Design Manual. The Stormwater Design Manual is what would regulate, you know, new development and how they capture and process stormwater or treat, excuse me, stormwater. This is more of a citywide document on how we plan for water quality and, and how it's discharged into our receiving waters. Any questions about kind of that nesting or what this, this map is meant to achieve so far? Okay, great. So the Receiving Water Assessment, like I said, is an assessment of the waters that we discharge to. So you can see there's Henderson Bay to the north and then Puget Sound to the south. What, the east? So Receiving Water Assessment is a GIES assessment and mapping exercise. And we analyzed data from a bunch of different sources to understand what's in these waters. This is kind of a table about what we use to evaluate the, the receiving waters. So there's kind of three different types of data, land use, environment, habitat, stormwater infrastructure. And then we were, they assigned points based on, you know, kind of the amount of hard surfaces within the boundary, the road density within certain boundaries, the presence of salmon on down the line. All right. Yeah, it's, it's all kind of like a point system within the assessment, and those are in the append. If you wanted to take a deeper dive, all of the, the analysis is in the appendix of the SMAP that was provided in the packet. So then the next step is basin delineation. So looking at all of the different drainage basins in the city, you can see there are all these different colors. The big red line is the city outline, and then this black and red line is our urban growth boundary. So you can see, like, there are lots of basins in the area. Some have more of their basin within the city boundary in UGA than others. And so we prioritize those basins that have a higher percentage of their area within the city boundary, because that's the thing that we can control. So we took a look at all the different basins that are within the city and then prioritized them by the highest area within the city limits. Those, so that kind of narrows it down. Then looked at those basins that have the kind of like worst water quality or water quality issues and maybe habitat issues, like a lot of culverts or barriers to fish passage, excuse me. And then we came up with North Creek as being the priority basin for this investigation. So just a little bit. Oh, go ahead.
I just have a comment. In the, in the pack that we received, those Action Plan Drainage Basins Seating Waters, your graphs on your slideshow are wonderful, but our packet is in black and white, gray and dark gray. And if, in the future, it's, I, I've asked for this before, not necessarily from planning, but if we could have those sheets at least printed in color, it would certainly especially when we pre-read this stuff. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks. Couple of questions. On the water quality assessment, the receiving waters, I guess we're talking about Henderson Bay and Puget Sound, everything. Well, they're all Puget Sound anyway, or St. Louis Sea. The quality, I mean, we talking chemical analyses or just sort of turbidity and dissolved oxygen, and that's it? I mean, unfortunately, you could look at a whole mess of things. We could look at heavy metals, we could look at petroleum hydrocarbons.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a range of things. I don't know all of the criteria off the top of my head, but it is in the, in the back of the packet. I know that, you know, like nutrient load is a big one. Making sure that we're not adding extra nitrogen to the, to Puget Sound is important. And turbidity. But yeah, it's, it's in the appendix, for sure.
Last question real quick. Does SR16, is it, I mean, I, it's, it's impacting us, I understand, because of the runoff. And that, a lot of that runoff probably goes into North Creek. Are we, is the city hurting from this? I mean, just trying to think of a if a major thoroughfare, state-run thoroughfare goes through and it's polluting the waters of our creek, there's not much we can do to clean it up. I mean, that's going to be a tough road. Was that part of the assessment or looked at?
That's a good question. I don't know, maybe Jeff, could you comment on how stormwater from SR16 is managed? If that's part of our responsibility?
It is part of our responsibility once it comes into our jurisdiction. And for better, for worse, the, just like most roadways in city roadways, the Highway 16 roadway is not, stormwater runoff is not treated. So it comes in as Councilmember Henderson is alluding to, untreated, goes into our waterways and then, and our, with, through our basins, and then it's discharged to Puget Sound. That is something that I think that having this map will be focusing on is to try and find ways to improve habitat and water quality.
Yeah. Really great question. So I don't think that's a problem that's unique to the city of Gig Harbor, certainly. But yeah, North Creek has, I think it's, there's just like a lot of development around North Creek in general, and then there's also copper contamination from the Sportsman's Club that's still in the process of being cleaned up, which is, I think that's kind of the highest contaminant of concern at the moment. Mayor Pro Tem Tem, got a question?
Just historically, I can say that in 2002 and 2008, Department of Ecology did do testing of North Creek and Donkey Creek. And there was no contaminants or damage to salmonoids. They did a mobility, mobility study of salmonoids. And Highway 16 was there, and there was, it was a negative test. Everything was fine. That was also, though, so Highway 16 was there, but the Costco, the Target, and all those homes were not. And just as a note, the contamination from the gun club is not copper, it's lead.
Oh, right. Thank you.
And they did the same exact testing for lead in North Creek and Donkey Creek for the salmonoid, and neither was that considered toxic. Now, I can tell you that the water running from, for instance, the Herons Key facility in that direction, even though they weren't there then, the water running into the Sportsman's Club property is, exceeds the state's mandate for lead as it enters the property. Now, don't, no doubt, it certainly picks up some lead when it passes through there. In fact, it picks up a lot. But from 2008 until this date, that lead, we get it, the club gets it tested regularly. And I don't know how involved you've been, but we have a consultant, very long consultants that test that water continually, as well as we have 18 wells now drilled in the trap field. And all that, none of that lead contamination has increased since 2008. So the, there's no new lead being put out there. But just just, I want to let you know that historically, Highway 16 really hasn't added to contamination in, in North Creek.
Thank you.
And incidentally, the creek that runs through the Sportsman's Club was erroneously called North Creek. It's an unnamed creek that runs into North Creek. And that's from the Department of Ecology nowadays.
Great. Thank you for those clarifications. Okay, so the contamination used to prioritize basins is, again, this is kind of more of a text version of what I was talking about. But does, do we have jurisdiction? Is it within the city limits? Does it discharge to Gig Harbor Bay? Or is there a lot of sediment going in? Is there a lot of road in, or impervious surface within the basin? Are there salmon present? Are there fish passage barriers? What is the water quality like? So all of these kind of go into the point system while in evaluating which basin to prioritize. So as we saw, North Creek Basin is the highest priority basin for a number of reasons. So then, when we're looking at, so then that third piece of the Stormwater Action Plan, you know, you're picking your, your basin, doing all this analysis, and then based on what is going on in that basin, you, Action Plan. So part of that is public outreach and education. How do we eliminate point source or point source pollution? How do we control sources? How do we make sure that we're getting rid of impervious surface? We can. And how do we make sure that our operations and maintenance is prioritizing this basin? Councilmember Henderson?
So illicit discharge and detection, are we going to propose something to do that? Or how does, I mean, how do we know if something's being discharged illicitly?
I think that is part of operations and maintenance. Again, I might defer to Jeff Langhome to, for a little bit more detailed information on that.
Yeah, it, there's a number of ways we can check the box and be able to identify illicit discharge detection. It's setting up a reporting system for the general public, and that might be part of the C-click-Fix. It's operations and maintenance, as Roxanne alluded to. It's also the education that a lot of city staff have undergone. It's Certified Erosion Cement Control Lead, CECL leads. It used to be just mostly our inspectors, public works, construction inspectors, who had that training, or stormwater technicians. But now there are staff, both in the Building Division and in the Planning Division that have had, been trained on this. So they now, we have more eyes out there. So if everybody can be aware of what illicit discharge and would look like, they can be detected and then we can address it at that point.
Great question. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Um, so some parts of uh public outreach can include education on pet waste and how that affects waterways, natural yard care, um, the city's continued participation in the Puget Sound Stormwater Outreach for Regional Municipalities or Storm Coalition and continuing to partner with Harbor Wild Watch to um do salmon counting and the Donkey Creek Chum Festival. Um, and then, yeah, again, keeping up with uh operations and maintenance, uh implementing city standards uh and retrofitting outfall pipes and energy dispersion to North, North Creek as it, as funding and um projects are uh implemented. Uh, so some short-term actions within the next six years. Um, I won't enumerate all of them, but um this gives you an idea of what we have in the short-term pipeline and what is funded so far. Um, and just so uh, just for clarification, all of this is art, was already funded. Uh, none of this is a proposal for any new kind of funding. That was definitely a a clarification we need to, to make with the planning commission. Um, and then longer-term actions, uh, they have a little bit more specific of a timetable in the, in the plan itself. Um, but these are kind of just like ongoing projects that um don't have any necessarily specific timeline, but are just important for um important things to implement while you're doing storm water and development work. All right. So that's my contact info. If you have any other questions, I'll stop sharing and um see if there's anything else you wanted to discuss.
I don't uh see anything. Nobody has their hands up?
I just threw a lot of information at you, so I know this is a very, this map is very technical. Um, I had to become a storm water expert in like the course of a week since we lost our wonderful storm water tech. Um, yes, Councilmember Wook.
Uh, yes, that was a great presentation and you did a wonderful job of explaining it. So I could mostly understand. Thank you so much. Uh, I know that before Bree left, um, she was hoping to be able to um reach out to some companies who were having discharge issues and uh, and go around and talk to folks. Uh, is that still on the plan some, sometime?
Your, Councilmember Wook, you're referring to source control. Uh, and the, yes, we are in the process of doing that. We hope to have a new engineering, announcement of a new engineering technician uh for storm water soon. And once that person's on board, uh, along with maybe possibly a construction inspector or two, we can uh get out and start doing our source control requirements per the permit.
Great, great. Thank you so much.
I'm really happy you're here, Jeff, to answer all these questions. Thank you.
Carl, do you have anything else to add to both Roxanne and Robin's presentation?
No, I've just uh again thanked them. Uh, it's really great and, and, and Roxy's absolutely correct. She had to become an expert overnight uh in storm water. Um, and Robin had to become an expert overnight in parks. Um, you know, this planning team had to kind of pick up, pick it up and, and carry this through. And of course, we had great support from Public Works and, and Jeff and his team too. I mean, it wasn't like we're on an island, but um it really, I'm, I'm really proud of the work and really appreciate uh all of the questions that, that council provided today. Um, and we will be bringing this back, as Robin said in her presentation, um, to the first council meeting in um in November, uh, and then second reading uh in the second meeting in November. And then we, we uh had to send this out to Commerce as well for um, uh, so they can get it out to agencies for comments. So the adoption date, um, you will see in the ordinance will be pushed out um into December. But we still are planning, we will still have this um adopted by the end of the year, um barring any other um setbacks or, you know, any other uh questions from, from council on that. But it sounds like we're in pretty good shape.
Uh, I just want to echo what Carl said about Robin and Roxy stepping up. Um, they, they did become experts really quick. And uh with the short staffing we've had in Public Works, they took it on in good stride and made it uh, uh, easy for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's all the discussion items we have in our agenda. Is there anything else to discuss for the good of the order? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Go to favor.
I.
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 Thank you all for being here. Bye now.